I would also, as I called the order of this meeting on the school board meeting, that is school district six to four, I would ask the clerk to just call the roll.
Newmaster?
Here.
Strike four G.
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Arcant, here.
Kaloy?
Here.
Daniels?
Here.
Ellison?
Here.
I would ask everyone to please stand for the collect motion.
I want to do this. The United States of America, we are required for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the fourth agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda. A motion by Ms. Daniels for the second. Second by Dr. Newmaster. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
A quote, same sign. We have a agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda, which is the various items that come before us monthly, including donations from our community and if all was that community, it will really matter as the donations that they make are used. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. A motion by Ms. Thompson for the second. Second by Ms. Strike four G. Any questions or discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strike four G.
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcant, aye. Kaloy?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
And we have consent agenda. It is now time for the public forum portion of the meeting. There were zero requests submitted this week. So we'll move into our first informational item, C1, student recognition. Tonight we celebrate students who have represented the district in various activities, including girls' basketball, boys' hockey, boys' swim and dive, wrestling, and high school and middle school knowledge pool. Congratulations, students, and thank you to the staff and family members who supported the students along the way. Go Bears! Right, congratulations, students. Into our first discussion item, D1, update on the sale of 2024 A general obligations school building and facilities maintenance funds.
Good evening. There were two facilities funding strategies that the facilities planning committee recommended when we went to the taxpayers for the bond referendum in 2018, and that was issuing general obligation school building bonds and long-term facility, or facility maintenance bonds for long-term facility maintenance projects. At the August 14th, 2023 school board meeting, the school board approved the resolution stating the intention to issue our final school building bond issuance and then a facility maintenance bond issuance. And then at our last meeting in March, March 26th of 2024, Shelby McQuay from Allers Financial was here to present the pre-sale report for today's bond sale. And so we received bids today, and Shelby is back to discuss the results of that sale.
Good evening. Congratulations on another good sale day. So as you are well aware, you issue competitively, and there's a, quite a market for your debt out there. And so what happens is we open the bids, we do all the prep work, and Andy Timon Wayne participated in the district's rating. We open the bids at a set time this morning, and then the lowest bid is the, the winning bid. And so I'll walk a little bit through the sale day report here to, to just highlight some of the, the high points. So JP Morgan was the winning bidder this morning at 3.04, and that is slightly lower than the pre-sale report that we brought to you last month. So we were anticipating, given the market conditions, that you would get about a, a 3.4 interest rate or a little 3.38 interest rate. So a good day to sell, bids came in lower than that, and that turns around and generates some interest savings for, for you overall and the taxpayers. So as Andy mentioned, this was combined as part of the last portion of the school building portion, so the voter approved portion with the facilities maintenance that is regularly issued every, about every other year or a little bit more to get this project done. So the $13 million portion of the approximately $43 million was the last of the $326 million school building bond. So I'll just note really high level that at the time that the district voted, we were anticipating about $195 million of interest on the 326, and that was all incorporated in to the overall tax impact that the voters authorized with this last issuance of the 13 million. And over the last two, the total interest is being incurred by the district is down to 133 million from 195. So some nice savings there over the, the three issuance, just because of the good market conditions that the district received. And then there'll likely be an opportunity down the road to even refinance some of that debt going forward, so some, some later opportunities possibly for taxpayer savings there. And as with all the other ones, this, this issue is refundable as well after 2032. So you'll have funds available on May 2nd. On the next couple pages, we show all the bidders. So of course, national attention again, JP Morgan was the winning bid, the cover bid was Morgan Stanley, and then there were a couple of other bidders out of New York, Charlotte, Philadelphia, and Milwaukee, Wisconsin. With any of the issues, we share with you the sources and uses, which essentially documents the, the par amount or the amount of the debt issue. You did receive another premium on this bid, which means that the bidder paid more than the face value, so that is able to be deposited into the construction fund for both the school building and the facilities maintenance portion. Some of the debt schedules are included in there, but then I'll just, you know, point again to the, to the overall schedule in the, in the visual, so the, the table here that just demonstrates that throughout the number of issuances that we've had, we've been able to maintain the tax rate that the, or lower than the voters authorized as part of the vote in 2019. So staying well within that, that range there. And then the last few pages, just for your reference, you did go through the rating process, and S and P affirmed your underlying rating for the district at a double A minus stable. So nice to have that affirmation from a third party on your overall district finances and, and then going forward, that'll hold until likely the next bond issuance, where we'll go through that again for a facilities maintenance portion. So I'm happy to answer any questions. That is the informational report. You will have a roll call vote on the resolution awarding the sale to JP Morgan tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. McQuay. Thank you so much. We appreciate all of your work, and these, these are great.
Yeah, thank you. We're excited to partner with the district.
All right. Thank you. I will move into discussion item D2, immersion programming study. Your first of all.
Good evening, Chair Ellison, members of the board. Glad to be here tonight to talk about our district's effort to explore immersion programming in the White Bear Lake schools. Immersion, we currently don't have an immersion program, as you know, but immersion, an immersion program fits within the district's strategic plan. In August of 2022, the board approved four additional strategies, and strategies two and three would address or would make room for an immersion program. Strategy two is we will promote, encourage, and support students' personal learning experiences and aspirations. And strategy three, we will ensure our organization continuously transforms to fulfill our mission. In order to move this work forward, we formed a steering committee who is just starting their work, just had one meeting, but these are the members of the steering committee. This is a diverse group of district leaders who share a really common commitment to, to do the work well. And so it's a diverse skills in this group, and, and we share the same commitment. So I think this is the right group of people in White Bear Lake to get the process rolling and to then move us into the input and engagement process. The purpose of this steering committee, it's an essential first step, but the steering committee is to establish the framework for the development of a Spanish immersion program within the White Bear Lake area schools and to identify key parameters that will inform the stakeholder engagement process. With the ultimate goal of bringing a recommendation to the school board in October of 2024. So we think we're just in a really good time slot right now to be getting this work rolling now. We'll have a little bit of a break during part of the summer, and then we'll really be able to gear up in October, or September, October, and bring it back to you. This chart might look familiar to the board as the guiding change document that we used in '21 and '22 when we worked on the attendance boundary process. This, this is really just a chart to guide our work. It's developed by Teamworks International, who we've worked with in the past. And on the left of this chart, you see the box, context and reality. This refers to our current conditions. And so as a steering committee, we took a look at that. Those are our vision, our core beliefs. I mentioned earlier that immersion program is solidly grounded within the vision of our strategic roadmap, our strategic plan. And so our, our context and our current reality really fit well for, for setting immersion. It also, on the context and reality bubble, it asks us to do, do an environmental scan of trends and influences. So what's happening in our local community and our educational community? These are, you know, that is our current reality. On the right, results, so that refers to what we're intending to create, our programs' performance, our performance indicators, outcomes. In the middle is the, this intervening space is our creative means, how we will get there, our process. Our steering committee will really develop those parameters, engage the public, provide to provide input, and then come up with a recommendation. Kind of laced around the outside is the unacceptable means, and that's the, what, what will, what will we not do? What's unacceptable in the development of this process, of this program? What, what will we, we'll identify those things and then make sure that we're being true to that. Okay? So that's the process, and, and so then we set up the why, the not how, and the what. So the current reality is the why. The unacceptable means around the edge, that's the not how, and then our desired results is the what. And so the steering committee spent an afternoon developing ideas, you know, developing the why, the not how, and the what. So take a first look here at the why. So first, I won't go through all of these, but I highlight a few of them. There's a high demand for immersion across the metro, and we don't have a program. So that's our current reality. We know there's a strong desire for language immersion in our community, really in the north metro, and so there's an opportunity here for us. Number three, multilingual learners don't have an opportunity to learn in their native language in our system, so our framework currently lacks provisions for multilingual learners to receive instruction in their native language alongside other students. Looking at number five, there's an increasing number of Spanish-speaking newcomers enrolling in our district. That really highlights the necessity of establishing comprehensive support students for the student, for our newcomer students, facilitate their integration within our system. And then number seven, many White Bear Lake families seek immersion outside of the school district. That is true. We get phone calls from parents with some regularity asking about immersion and potential for immersion in the future, and then how are they going to get the needs met for their students, for families who are seeking immersion. And we know there's a wide network of immersion programs across the metro area, and these are great resources and research that's available to school districts. The not how, you'll be glad to know, number one, that we will not knowingly violate law, policy, or values. But also, number two, I think is important to, we will not allow special and self-interest to drive the design and implementation of the, of the program. So our decision-making process will prioritize the collective good and, you know, the educational value of the program. Three, conjecture, very similar conjecture and personal impact statements will not drive the design and decision-making. Five, we won't ignore equity commitment, equity decision-making policy, or protocol, I mean, or strategic plan. So those are established protocols that we have within our district, and we will follow those as well. Number seven, I think important, we will not ignore the input and needs of historically marginalized communities, and we're committed to making sure that families in, in those marginalized communities have a voice at the table as well. Okay? And then number eight, I think is an important thing to note, that this won't be a, you know, favorite child kind of program. It won't get additional resources the other programs don't get. There might be some additional startup costs like there are for any program, but from a per-student funding level, an immersion program should operate at the same level of any, any classroom in the school district. Right, then the what? What do we want? What will our desired results look like? And then, you know, as the steering committee works through this process, this is an important document for us to keep in front of us, and when we come to you in October, we should bring this document with us and, and show that, that we've, you know, met our expectations on this. Yeah, number one, the immersion program will be evidence-based, so it's rooted in research and best practices. The third one, program will demonstrate White Bear Lake area schools' commitment to multilingualism and cultural identity. This program allows us to promote language acquisition at a high level, strengthen the cultural understanding for all of our students, and honor the backgrounds of our Spanish-speaking students and families. The fourth one, family engagement will be intentional in the program to build bridges between the different communities that are part of the immersion program. Future-oriented pedagogical approaches we would expect of all of our programs. And then finally, for the White Bear Lake immersion program to become the immersion program of choice for White Bear Lake families and, and for others as well. So parameters that the committee will be held to is the, the why, the not how, and the what, the things we just took a look at. But also, a process for engaging stakeholders, it would be the committee's responsibility to identify that process and design ways for input of staff members, our, our teachers, our parents, students, interested community members to have a voice at the table. The steering committee would be responsible for researching, identifying, and selecting acceptable models for an immersion program. There's a lot of different ways to do immersion, and finding the right one for your community and your school district is, is, is important. So looking at format, curriculum assessment, location. And then finally, in October of next year, recommendation to the board. So that's the work our steering committee will be responsible for. Ian Abraham and I will be co-chairing this committee. So that's the work that we have started and that we are committed to moving forward. I'm open to any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Wong? I'll start with Strike four G. So I was just recently talking with someone, I had elementary students in an immersion program in the metro, and then they had, they were not, they had no options for middle school, and then some options for other schools. Has that been a topic of?
Yeah, we, we just haven't, I appreciate the question, and it's an important question. Many districts who start with an elementary immersion program in the middle school and high school have an immersion element. And so it might be two classes in middle and high school that are, where there's an immersion opportunity. So maybe it's math and, I don't know, physics, social studies, and something else, where students are in immersion for a few class periods. It's not typical at the middle and high school level to have a full immersion. But I, we haven't really gotten that far, but I would expect that we're going to have a robust conversation about that.
Maybe this is also a steering committee work, so maybe I'll have to answer, but I just wondered about the current coordination at elementary, will those, will those, will be opportunities in the elementary schools that are not immersion, that have some language or that, or that steering committee?
Yeah, well, it's, no, it's not a steering committee process. So that's a larger process within our district that we're looking at elementary specialists, and so it'll be within that context that that discussion occurs. EBD, yes.
I'm just thinking of my background in four languages, and I know people involved in some immersion programs in central, many times, they also have, need a strong ALL person there, because if you've got language speakers coming in that want to keep their fluency and to write maybe in their own language, which you might not develop if you went to an immersion program. I'm hoping there'll be a strong, what would you say, a strong position for that English language, you know, there's other issue other than English, because that's a balance that sometimes is a tough one for the subject.
I appreciate that comment. We're, yeah, that, that will be a element that we'll need to be prepared for. Lot of work ahead of us on this. And if you, you know, look at that committee of folks who are working in there, you have, you know, we have a strong representation from our teaching and learning department, and so we'll, we'll be looking for their leadership. Appreciate that.
Is this, so the teachers that we have now, do we have anyone that's able to do the immersion program? Or do we need to hire from?
Yeah, it is likely that we'll be hiring, that we'll have to hire from outside, but if there's somebody, I don't know the answer to that. If there's someone who will, who would jump at the opportunity to be an immersion teacher, that would be amazing. That'd be awesome.
Because speaking with somebody that actually has a job in immersion program locally, they, I have no idea, they were having difficulty getting teachers who have lived in the city. They were actually way outside the US to get those teachers, and some of them would kind of like to exchange.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we've had conversations with another school district that has large immersion programming in their district, and they have partnerships outside of the US to bring in Spanish-speaking teachers, and like you said, student teaching or with, just within, just to add a Spanish-speaking, native-speaking teacher into that, or adult into that classroom who might be here on a internship kind of. You know, the development of an immersion program is a pretty slow process, and typically you implement it in kindergarten, and then you grow. So it's really, one, if it's in one school, and, you know, if you did a school within a school, it would just be one person you'd be hiring, or if you did multiple schools, might be two or three. If you did an entire school immersion, usually districts develop that over time, start with a smaller program, and then when the capacity is significant enough, or maybe a waiting list that the demand is so high that you go into a, maybe a full immersion building. But we aren't in a position to take a lot of risks. You know, we have to be really thoughtful, make sure that from a financial and an operational strategies are in place to be able, you know, have a program last.
So then we talked about that, with our current discussions on whether we know where our budget is, it's not in a very good place where we relate it to you right now, and we're not sure where it's going to end up, because that will depend on many different factors.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and the not how this, number eight, is we will not create a program that receives more resources than existing non-immersion programs. So I see this as, this is a wonderful thing, and I hope we can finally make this work. But we hopefully implementing it if it's going to affect current program, right? Say we have to hire teachers to do this program, right now, the way I see it, we would have to move teachers in order for the budget.
Yeah, you know, there hasn't been a year I've been in White Bear Lake where we haven't hired teachers at all grade levels, right? We're, we're, we're hiring typically, a lot of times it can be, it might be July or August, but we're hiring. And so if you think that you were to start an immersion program at a school next year, let's say, you'd be looking at hiring a teacher, right? And so I think it's doable.
How are we looking at hacking that all up, so we know which school this will get on students for it to be, you know, a thing that we could actually implement? How are we going to collect that data?
Yeah, well, it would be a data collection process all the way through it. And so when you implement an immersion classroom in a school, let's say, yeah, you're starting that signup, we'll be having parent engagement to gate, to gauge whether we have the interest in the program. Could be that everyone says, nope, not going to happen, based on the numbers of conversations we've had and phone calls we've received. I don't think that's going to be the case. In fact, in every immersion program in the metro area, there's a waiting list. So I don't think we're going to have a hard time getting people into the program. Right? And in fact, from a budget perspective, if you were just to consider it from that point of view, I think it's, could have a very positive impact on the school district. Yeah, one of the things we pointed out is, is, I can say with some confidence that we've lost students to open enrollment because we don't have an immersion program.
I've heard that conversation, so I had to ask the question.
Yeah, yeah.
I know you guys are taking it as well.
Dr. Newmaster? I think it sounds like you would need to study this in a very small way and see how it goes, and I'm thinking as people change districts and look at programs, you know, they're looking at continuing. We do have, I know in a special immersion daycare in White Bear Lake, so there's people there that are believe or something. But I can see why they're missing, but I want to second. So you're going to have a lot to balance.
Yeah.
I don't envy you.
Nothing's ever easy. It's just the work.
Yeah, I think this is a really good place to start and I would be interested to hear an update from the committee before October to see where you're at before you go into our foundation to do more of that with the local. Globally, we're behind our students being able to speak multiple languages. And so I think any, this is always the optional, an optional opportunity for our students to have this would be, it would be fantastic. I think the only, you know, reflection that I have is when I first did it before, we were running a lot of presentations about the ID programs, which is at Matoska. So currently, what we removed from those schools because it wasn't implemented with fidelity and have the same support. And so I would just ask that committee to keep that in mind, that there's a long-term plan for this, which I know that you will, but I do think it will be helpful to get that played before October.
Okay.
As you mentioned, that helps that I'm thinking of immersion program, that's another one that's kind of a district-wide agenda perhaps. So.
Do we still have the district-wide gifted program at Lincoln? And that has special bus, busing issues as well as a large percent of the kids at Matoska are district-wide enrollees. So this might be another one.
Yeah, it would serve as a magnet.
At a school that already has.
Where you would potentially, you know, have transportation available from all parts of the district.
Or if you have a school that's already drawing from the district, it might be a good pairing.
Very, very true.
All right. Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wald. All right, we'll move into discussion item D3, which is the first reading of school board policies. How this works is that this, the board policies come to us to separate meetings. They come to us for a first read where board members ask any questions or discuss, and then they come to us on a subsequent meeting for approval. So this is the first reading of school board policies 403, 498, 502, 606.5, 801, and 910. And if board members have any questions, I would ask that you please point us to the school board policy and the page number so we can follow along. Any questions about any of these policies? All right. So these policies will come before us in May for a second reading and approval. We'll move into our operational items. Operational item E1, action to award 2024A general obligation school building and facilities maintenance bonds. Ms. Johnson.
Earlier in the evening, Shelby McQuay went over the sale day report from the bond issuance that we have for your approval tonight. So the recommended action is to approve the resolution awarding the sale of general obligation school building and facility maintenance bonds, series 2024A, in the original aggregate principal amount of $42,835,000.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve? A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second by Ms. Beloit. Any further questions or discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan. Aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. Next, operational item E2, action on the fiscal year 2022, 2023 federal single audit. Ms. Johnson.
At the January 20, January 22, 2024 meeting, Jim Ickton from our auditor, auditing firm, MMKR, presented the fiscal year 2223 audit report. And at that time, he explained that we would later be coming forward for your acceptance of the federal single audit. And so that's what we're bringing forward to you at this time. The federal single audit is a separate audit that we're required to perform because we receive more than $750,000 in federal funds. And so there's a lot of testing that goes into our compliance and making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's appropriately. So this year, they looked into three programs, our special education program, our Title One program, and then our multitude of ESER programs, our COVID funding programs. And we're pleased to let you know that we did not receive any findings on any of the programs. So that's quite a feat. We're very proud of that. So at this point, the recommended action is to accept the fiscal year 2022, 23 federal single audit as presented.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
The moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster and a second.
Second.
Um, second by Ms. Daniels. Any further questions or comments? Oh, Ms. Daniels.
Congratulations. I know it's a lot, a lot of gathering everything for, over a long period of time and interviewing a lot of people and making sure you have all the paperwork and all the receipts and all the, everything. So good work.
Yeah, thank you.
A single audit is a tremendous amount of work, so.
It is, yes. And it's a lot of different people who are involved in that. So it's not just me and my team. It's the teaching and learning department, the special department. There's a whole lot of people that make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. So thank you.
All right. We have a first and a second. This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan. Aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. Move into operational item E3, action on the Highway 61, 8th Street, Division Avenue project. Mr. Wald.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. A requirement for the permit for the high school expansion project was for the district to do road improvements to Highway 61, 8th Street, and Division Avenue to make the school more accessible for the larger number of individuals that will be accessing the building. So tonight, we're asking the board to approve the bids for the project. I want to tell you a little bit about the project first because it's a little bit complicated. Highway 61, the project will add a stoplight at Highway 61 and 8th Street, and it will create more queuing space for northbound vehicles. So right now, as you go, there's a stoplight at 7th Street and then you can move on to 8th, there's not a stoplight. There's really not much room to queue there. There will actually be pretty, it'll queue almost all the way from 7th Street to 8th Street on the left-hand turn lane. Okay? So it'll create more space there. There'll be improvements to the railroad crossing skirt at the, at across 8th Street. There'll be improvements to sidewalks along that as well. There'll be crosswalks both the north and south side of that, of Highway 61 and 8th Street. So if you're walking from down 8th Street to get to the other side of downtown, there'll be crosswalks on both sides. And I believe a refuge on the north side. At Highway 61, yeah, the refuge would be at Highway 61 and 7th Street. There's not currently a refuge. If you use the crosswalk on 7th Street, there's not a spot there to stop in the middle if you got too courageous and then changed your mind. There's, there will create a refuge there in the middle of Highway 61 on 7th. On 8th Street, the road will be widened. Parking will be limited to the south side of the street. Currently, cars park on both sides of that street. There'll be a sidewalk on the south side of 8th Street that'll stretch from Highway 61 to Bloom. The parking on that side will really create that barrier to that sidewalk, create a little safer barrier on 8th Street. And 8th Street and Division will become a four-way stop. On Division Avenue, we will be adding north and southbound turn lanes into the school parking lot. So there's, there'll be two entrances on Division, the north one. The north entrance will be for student drop-off and pickup. The south entrance will be for student parking. And there'll be turn lanes coming each direction. And there will be a crosswalk from the student drop-off parking lot across Division that will lead to a sidewalk that'll run the length of the Center for the Arts property. So we've had conversations with the Center for the Arts, providing opportunities for students to move from the high school to utilize that facility. So it's going to be an exciting element for our arts program, also for the Center for the Arts to have access to so many students, you know, provide art education opportunities. So there'll be a crosswalk with a refuge in the middle and then a sidewalk, the north-south length of the Center for the Arts property, and then a sidewalk entering into their facility. So we will have easy access to walk students across to the Center for the Arts. One thing I want to note is this agreement will be presented to the city council tomorrow night, and so we're asking you to approve it tonight with the understanding that the city council will approve it tomorrow night. And so bids won't be awarded unless both, both organizations have approved it. So the, the bids are divided into two separate projects, the Highway 61 project and the 8th Street and Division. There's multiple entities working on this. You have MinDOT with Highway 61. There's two railroad organizations we're working with, one who's the owner of the railroad, one who leases it, and then the city of White Bear Lake and the school districts. So there's a lot of organizations to get together to come to an agreement on how this project will work. But the Highway 61 improvements, the low bidder was Forest Lake Contracting with a bid of $754,600. And they, they did our intersection up by North Star and did great. They were great to work with. And then on 8th Street and Division Avenue was Miller Excavating at $845,307. So the total for the projects, $1,599,907 compared to the high bids, that's a, quite a difference, which came into $2,186,714. That might be listed incorrectly on the memo on the high bid. But compared to the second bid is $1,669,300. So it's a difference of about $69,393 between the low first bid and the low second bid. So the recommendation is that the board authorize the superintendent or the assistant superintendent for finance and operations to accept the bids for Highway 61, 8th Street, Division Avenue project as presented to Forest Lake Contracting in the amount of $754,600 and Miller Excavating incorporated in the amount of $845,307. Acceptance of the bids by the superintendent or the assistant superintendent for finance and operations is contingent upon approval of the project by the White Bear Lake City Council on April 9, 2024.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
The moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second.
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any further questions or discussion? Real quick clarification, Mr. Wald, this falls under bond referendum funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan. Aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. Operational item E4, action on the resolution proposing placement of continuing contract teacher on unrequested leave of absence. Ms. Gustafson.
Thank you, Chair Ellison and members of the school board. In order to meet the budget targets that were approved by the school board in February of 2024, we seek approval of a resolution placing Elizabeth Kratsky on an unrequested leave of absence.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
The moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji. Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan. Aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels. Ellison.
Aye. And the motion passes. We'll move into our next, uh, next operational item E5, action on tentative agreement with 2023-25 with a confidential employee group. Ms. Gustafson.
Thank you again, Chair Ellison. We are here tonight to seek approval for a, for terms and conditions for our confidential employee group, a group of about five employees that includes human resources specialists along with the executive assistant to the superintendent and school board. The proposed terms and conditions do fall within budget parameters, and so we do seek your approval of their 2023-25 terms and conditions of employment.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
The moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second. A second by Ms. Strife Oji. Any further questions or comments? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife Oji.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan. Aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels. Ellison.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. And we'll move into our final operational item E6, action on school board policies. This is the second reading, and we usually approve these in one fell swoop. So we are looking for action on board policies 609, 901, 903, 905, and 906. Could I get a motion to approve? A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, and the motion passes. Move into our final item on our agenda, Board Forum. Board Forum is an opportunity for board members to share things that are going on around the district, things that they're connected with in their role as school board members. Does anybody have anything to share for Board Forum? Ms. Strife Oji.
I have a few things here. One was, I just want to say that I attended. I know some of the other board members attended also the Willow Lane Izzy that happened last week, which is an intentional social interaction, inviting families in for a community dinner. And it was really exciting to see a packed gym and lots of families and especially with the boundary changes because there are quite a bit fewer students and to see it just as crowded was really exciting. And then tickets are on sale now for this year's middle school musical, Disney's Descendants the Musical. Performances will take place at 7:00 PM on April 25 and 26 and at 2:00 PM on April 27 at the District Center Community Auditorium. Find ticket information in a news post on the district website at www.isd624.org. And then Sunrise Sunset. The team at Sunrise Park Middle School is pulling together a Sunrise Sunset event that will take place from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on Thursday, May 2. The event will offer community members the opportunity to visit Sunrise Park Middle School before the middle school moves from the current south campus, to the current south campus building and becomes Mariner, becomes Mariner Middle School next fall. Sunrise Park will be converted to a housed district offices, early childhood, transition education center, and the senior center. Additional information will be shared soon, but mark your calendar for May 2 today.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Daniels.
I just wanted to let the community know that there's a community market. If they haven't heard about it yet, it's over at Normandy Park, right near the senior center and early childhood. And the community market is open to any neighbors in the community that are food insecure. And there is no, you don't have to fill out any paperwork. There aren't any restrictions to anyone. This is all food recovery that we get from supermarkets, grocers from all over the community. The people volunteer to go pick up and then it comes to the community market. And it, you can find the hours on the food, White Bear Lake Food Web, Food South website. And they, they welcome customers and you just wait in your car until it's your turn. They take your phone number and they, they text you and say it's your turn and you come in and you can shop and take the food home. So I hope, if you know of anyone or you, your families need extra food, that you'll take advantage of this.
Thank you. Anyone else for Board Forum? All right. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Chair Ellison, I move for an adjournment.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, and we are adjourned.